7:30.
I'll the meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, March 8, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference, which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman Govea will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you're participating via Zoom, which no one is, okay. We're gonna skip that part. Don't need to do roll calls this evening. Will the clerk please call the rolls?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cleve.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, I'm here.
Alderman Camau.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Cathy.
Present.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Rocha.
I'm here.
You have 15 other members.
Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. I'd like to recognize just for a moment of silence for Rennie Cushing. Rennie Cushing was a 25-year, that I'm aware of, state representative that passed yesterday. I know a lot of us served with him and were friends with him, so if we could just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just have a few things. First, we have received today our Ukraine flag, and we will be doing a flag raising ceremony next week, next Tuesday, week from today, at 5:30 in front of City Hall to recognize and support the freedom and the independence of the Ukrainian people. And we've reached out to a number of groups and people in Nashua and in New Hampshire in the hopes that some Ukrainian Americans or as many as possible will be able to join us. And of course, you are all invited, and I encourage you to attend. On many occasions, I have reported to you about the COVID numbers, and they got pretty high this past winter. They are dramatically better. I mean, we still have COVID, but the positivity rate, which is the percent of people who test and turn out to have COVID, is 4.8% as of early this week. And that is down from almost 30% not so long ago. And the number of new cases per 100,000 within the last 14 days, which is another measurement that is commonly used, is down to around 200, and that was close to 3,000 a few weeks back. So that's good news. The hospitals have felt a lot of relief, and so things, at least for the time being, are quite a bit better. I wanted to mention to you, Madam President, one of the things that's on your agenda tonight, which is the nomination, my nomination, of Matt Sullivan as the Community Development Director. He's been serving as the City Planning Director for some time now, a little over, almost a year and a half. He previously worked for the town of Wolfboro and for the Stratford County Regional Planning Commission. He's done a very good job and has received outstanding reviews by people throughout the city. We had an, we solicited applications and received some from around different areas of the country. And we had an interview team consisting of Lisa Photo, Tim Cummings, Deb Chisholm, who works in community development, as well as Noah Tollersky. They interviewed several people and unanimously came back and said that they didn't even think it was worth going to a second round, that Matt Sullivan was clearly the most qualified. I subsequently talked with the director of the, or the Chair of the Planning Board. He thought Matt's doing a great job. So based upon all that and my own experience with Matt, which has been very favorable, I nominated him. He went before the Personnel Committee last night. I think he did a very good job. And he comes before you tonight with the unanimous recommendation of the Personnel Committee. And finally, Madam President, you see on your agenda the contract for the award of the 2022 paving program. This will continue with our paving plan of action and pave and crack seal more streets. This comes to you because it is a contract of more than $1 million. It has been recommended by the Board of Public Works and also by the Finance Committee. So I hope you will approve of that contract. And that is all I have for you this evening, Madam President.
Responses to the remarks of Mayor? Alderman Cleve.
Yes, thank you. I am very happy, Mr. Mayor, that you have put forward Mr. Sullivan to be Director. I've worked with him for quite a while since Sarah has left us, and he's been invaluable. He knows without having to go and look things up, and it's just great. And then he can, he can cite, you know, the different zoning laws and so on that I have to know, especially like in the municipal as well as here. So I do appreciate his knowledge from within and that you put his name forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I just want to say that I worked with Matt quite a bit with a school project, and he's been outstanding. I don't think we could find a better, better person to fill that, that role, having lost Sarah, who was hard to replace. But he is doing an outstanding job.
Okay, recognition period.
There was none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of February 8th. And February 15th, 2022, the accepted plays on file and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Fire Marshal Adam Puglio regarding 19 Roby Street, from Nashville Public Library Director Jennifer McCormick regarding the Nashville Public Library Strategic Plan, and from Legislative Affairs Manager Donna Graham regarding communications received from the public.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I have six people signed up. First is Kevin Ruck.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'd like to speak on behalf of the collected bargain agreement between the Nashville Police Commissioners and the UFPO Local 645. The union, the union is made up of 17 civilian members. Most of these are civilian supervisors. They supervise the Teamsters Union. They include three lawyers, IT manager, community policing coordinator, two fleet maintenance supervisors, citywide radio communication supervisor, two domestic violence advocates, the records manager, and our building maintenance supervisor. They are some very talented, important people that we have today at the PD. During the early part of negotiations, we expressed to them, like we do all our unions, the city's perspective and important items. One of those items, important items, was the healthcare give back with HMO deductible plan. This was very important to the mayor and the city. They gave that back with no reservation. They were very reasonable. They proposed them. The police, the Nashville Police Commissioners and I think this is a very fair and reasonable contract. I would ask that you support this contract this evening. Thank you.
Jerry Pronier? I know he just stepped out. I'll, I'll try to catch him on his way back in. Tim Senat?
Thank you, Tim Senat, 62 Underhill Street, Nashua. I'm just here to briefly speak to Ordinance O22004, which will prohibit a right turn on red from Adventure Way onto Daniel Webster Highway. I just want to start by thanking Alderman Tebow for authoring this legislation and for everybody who supported it, either here in this chamber or with the Infrastructure Committee. The reason I want to speak to this tonight, it's not a particularly exciting or attractive piece of legislation, but anybody who's driven down Daniel Webster Highway lately can see how important that intersection is becoming. The BJ's Gas Station has recently opened there, and the recent influx in gas prices has caused significant traffic increases in that area, backing up in both directions, not just down the south end, but the north end as well. And just around the corner, we have plans and intent from the Costco Superstore to open their new location behind Old Navy, which is going to add to that block of traffic. I want to repeat my thanks to Alderman Tebow and hope that everybody in this room will keep this intersection at the forefront of their minds as this development increases. It's going to get a lot worse before it gets any better, and I hope that this is just the first of several items that come forth to help mitigate the problems that may arise with the increase in traffic. Thank you.
You're welcome. Brad Westgate?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. My name's Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner Bennett, 111 Concord Street in Nashua. Here to speak on the petition filed by Elizabeth Liu relative to building permit authorization for a vacant lot at 19 Roby Street. Ms. Liu and her husband Matthew Plant are here as well. They live at 17 Roby Street. 19 Roby Street, as mentioned, is a vacant lot. They would like to build a single-family home, related retaining wall and other improvements on 19 Roby Street, but have to go through a number of processes to have the permits necessary to do so. They've been before the Zoning and Planning Board for a number of permits already, but are before this board because of a petition I filed on their behalf on January 31. There's a state statute that requires the governing body of a municipality to authorize the issuance of building permits when the property doesn't have frontage on a city-accepted street. And that's the case here. This end of Roby Street was never built out and accepted by the city, of course, most of Roby Street was. It was laid out on a plan many, many years ago, 1916, actually. What happens is that when 20 years pass after the laying out of a street and the city doesn't accept it, the law at the time provided that that street effectively reverted to private access only. So this statute requires this board, in this particular case, to authorize the issuance of building permits if they're able to pursue getting the necessary building permits for the project. Your action doesn't actually generate the permit. They still have to go through the normal building department channels for that process. Earlier this evening, just before the meeting started, I had passed out, and I think all the members of the board received it, two sheets of paper. One was a proposed motion that I had edited from the motion that Ms. Graham had sent out with your packets earlier today. And the second page of that sheet is the edits that I actually did to that motion. The reason essentially for the edits was that Adam Puglio, the Fire Marshal, had met with Mr. Plant yesterday. Over the last day or so, he's been communicating with Mr. Plant and also with Ms. Graham and Matt Sullivan, Planning Director, regarding his initial letter of February 22, commenting on his thoughts relative to access. Because of his meeting with Mr. Plant and further review of the matter, he came to the conclusion, that is, Mr. Puglio, that the access as provided in the plan set made by Hayner Swanson for this project would be satisfactory. Because the original motion tied into his letter of February 22, which had some specific recommendations regarding access, given that those have now really changed, I suggested that the motion for approval be modified to rather than tying into his February 22 letter and instead reference just generally that the requirements of the Fire Marshal be satisfied in connection with the issuance of the permit.
Your time?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I respectfully request that the motion be granted. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Lori Ordolano?
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'm here to speak about R. 22008, the Expendable Trust Fund for Court Street. I am not in support of this and feel that we should be looking at another way to address Court Street. And I would hope that the board will think a little bit about this. There's an existing resolution that was passed in 2011, R. 11-160, which is set up to establish a trust fund, it's Expendable Trust Fund, and has been funded for renovations, repairs, and maintenance for various city buildings. So I'm wondering why R. 11-160 is not being utilized? The other thing is Laura Calhoun is going to dial in and talk to you about the Special Revenue Fund that's used by the Hunt Building. And I think you have a lot more transparency when you put a building like 14 Court Street into that Special Revenue Fund. Now personally, 14 Court Street is a white elephant. It's a money pit. And I think the only reason we maintain that old building is that the central fire station emergency call lines come in from the north and south into that building. And I don't know if that can be moved. That's the significance of that building. There's call lines there. And so if that's not the case, Alderman O'Brien can clear that up. But there's some significance with the fire department in that building. And the rest of the building is so expensive to maintain that it's, you know, the, the communication by the administration when they spoke to the board last week, saying we would hope this would become self-sufficient, I think is that what should have been said is most likely it will never be. That hasn't been a self-sufficient facility probably in 50 years, and I don't think you're going to get it there. And I think Peacock Players and other places that are utilizing those theaters, you should look for spaces downtown that you can move those places to and not operate that building anymore. That we were not told accurate information last year about the roof cost. It was budgeted for $750,000, ended up being $250,000. Money ended up being shifted over there. I think there was a total lack of transparency in what went on with that building, and I don't want to create an avenue that allows that to exist. So use the existing resolution if you want, or pay attention to Ms. Calhoun, because I think she's going to make some sense on greater transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Karen Bill?
Hi, Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place, excuse me, Nashua. I'd like to speak about the communications received from the public. While I was reading through the 350-page Board of Aldermen packet for this evening's meeting, I was puzzled by the support for keeping outside dining, like someone said it was going to go away. Then I was informed that a letter from the mayor went out asking residents if they wanted it to be continued in language that didn't mention altering.
Ms. Bill, we're not taking action on that this evening.
Well, you did take action on it as a point of order, because you approved, approved it, approved the communication. So that is taking action.
No, we're not taking action on that this evening, Ms. Bill.
So, so I have to wait until...
So you can talk about it at the next public comment period, if you'd like. Thank you. On Zoom, we have Laura Calhoun?
Laura Calhoun from 30 Greenwood Drive. I'm here tonight to speak against the establishing of an Expendable Trust Fund for 14 Court Street. It would be beneficial to the Nashua taxpayers and more transparent to have the city set up a Special Revenue Fund account. The city currently has this type of account on the Hunt Building. This would show all the taxpayers the income versus the expenses on a monthly basis, Court Street. Also, in setting up this Special Revenue Fund account, the city would be able to set up a separate line appropriation for Court Street as stated in Resolution R-21-142. It is important that the Nashua taxpayers have transparency on all the properties that are owned and operated by the city of Nashua, where the city is making, whether the city is making money on the property or not. The city has not done a presentation on Court Street since February 2020, and that is not acceptable in the eyes of the taxpayers. But putting the Court Street in a Special Revenue Fund account, the taxpayers could see the progress on Court Street monthly and not have to wait to find out where the taxpayers stand on the building. Taxpayers will be able to see when and if this property will ever be profitable. I ask the Board of Aldermen to vote this down, Resolution R. 22008, to set up this Expendable Trust Fund for Court Street. Taxpayers demand and deserve transparency. Thank you.
Matthew Guthro?
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Aldermen, Mr. Mayor, Matthew Guthro, 104 Fawn Lane, Nashua, New Hampshire. Today, you're going to hear an update of the strategic plan of our public library by Jennifer McCormick. Changes and enhancements to our library here in Nashua are long overdue.
We're not acting on that this, this evening, Matthew.
Okay, I'll wait to the next session then. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Jerry Pronier, not here?
If I may, I'm Rob Parsons. Mr. Pronier was representing us. I'm owner of The Landing, which is a parcel just south of Adventure Way, south of the intersection that was to be voted on tonight. But we, we're going to, he's not going to speak tonight. We're going to address it at a later, at a later date. But there is a, a butter on that road that would like to speak if they could take his spot.
Is that something we're taking action upon this evening?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Need you to name an address for the record, and you have three minutes, okay?
Rob Greer, owner of SkyVenture New Hampshire, on Adventure Way. We are the business that's on Adventure Way, and we are most heavily affected by this, whatever action this is. Yes, this intersection has been a big problem lately, but the problem is with traffic coming into the section, into the area versus leaving the area. And I'd just like everybody to keep that in mind, please. I've got customers that are trying to leave, and they want to leave and go north because they can avoid a lot of traffic that way. And leaving Adventure Way on a red light, assuming there's no traffic coming north, it makes perfect sense. Obviously, you have to wait. If there's traffic coming, you can't turn. It's very logical. But it's a very easy way to reduce traffic on Adventure Way. Again, the biggest backup is from traffic coming into the area and leaving. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donjes regarding contract award in excess of $1 million, 2022 paving program.
Alderman Cleve?
Thank you, Madam President. I motion to approve the award of the, of the construction contract for the 2022 paving program to Sunshine Paving Corporation of Hudson, New Hampshire, in the amount of $4,562,802.50. Funding will be through Department 160 Admin Engineering Funds, Bond and Trust, Activity Paving, and Department 169 Waste Water Funds, Bond and Waste Water, Activity Sewer Rehab, and Storm Water Abatement.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
Petition for authorization for issuance of building permits for a building on a private road, 19 Roby Street.
Alderman Jettie?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So I'm going to make the motion that was recommended by the, the Infrastructure Committee. First, so the motion is to authorize the issuance of a building permit pursuant to RSA 674:41 for the erection of a single-family dwelling unit at 19 Roby Street with sole access via Roby Street, a private road, provided that, one, the municipality neither assumes responsibility for maintenance of said private road nor liability for any damages resulting from the use thereof; and, two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall produce evidence that notice of the limits of municipal responsibility and liability has been recorded in the Gillsborough County Registry of Deeds for the lot for which the building permit is sought; and, three, access to the new structure will be provided by a 16-foot-wide driveway, which shall extend to within 50 feet of at least one exterior door per NFPA 1 Chapter 18; and, four, the E911 address assigned to this property will be 19 Roby Street; and, five, the applicant shall satisfactorily address all requirements of the City Engineering Department. And I'd like to speak on that.
Alderman Jettie?
So as you heard from Attorney Westgate, the, the history of this, and this motion that I just read is what I proposed at the Infrastructure Committee, Committee Meeting, because, you know, I felt it included all of the requirements of the law and, and the Planning Board and the Fire Marshal. However, since then, as you heard Attorney Westgate explain, the, the Fire Marshal has indicated that that the 16-foot-wide driveway that he talked about in his, in his letter is, is no longer a requirement, and that, that he and the, the engineering company that's working with the petitioner, the applicant, you know, have come up with a, a different way of dealing with this. And, you know, I just, it's unfortunate the Fire Marshal did not send another letter explaining that, but he did send an email, which Attorney Westgate showed me, and, and our new, our about-to-be-new-planning-director, Matt Sullivan, confirmed that that was the, the case. So in, in view of that, I would like to make a motion to amend what I just read to you by replacing it with the amended motion that was just passed out to you. I hope that I can, I don't have to read the whole thing.
I don't have it.
I'll just, I'll just point out that Attorney Westgate made some improvements to what I had written. And, and most significantly, in number three, he's changed to the petitioner shall satisfactorily address all requirements of the Fire Marshal's office instead of specifying the, the driveway that, that I, that was outlined in the original motion. So that's basically the amendment. And so I move to amend the, the original motion by replacing it with that copy.
The motion is to amend. Alderman O'Brien, does you have your...
Thank you, Madam President. As many of the members here on the Infrastructure Committee remember, we did discuss this the other night. The Jettie Amendment seems to meet some of our concerns, and it satisfies the needs and wants and the flavor of what the Fire Marshal basically agrees. So I would, as Chairman, I say that it meets what we discussed, and I would fully support this motion. And I'd like to thank Alderman Jettie for working with and cleaning this up, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is to amend with the language that was handed out. Alderman Cleve?
Thank you. This looks really, really good, but I just have some clarification. Thank you. This looks really, really good, but I just have some clarification to anybody who can answer. When it says the municipality neither assumes responsibility for maintenance or said private road nor liability for any damages resulting from the use thereof, does that mean we don't pave it? We don't continue the paving? We don't plow it? Will there be trash pickup for that? For that particular address? And if there's any accident or anything that happens on that, is the city liable for anything?
Alderman O'Brien.
I'm going to have to research, but maybe somebody else could give a better answer. But basically, private roads, I think that would mean that the owners would be responsible for the paving. Trash, I think that's the one that I question. I think everybody through their tax base has some entitlement to track, you know, trash pickup.
Madam Chair. The reason I, the reason I brought that up is recently I've been approached by someone, and I think Alderman Dowd can speak to it as well, from someone in Ward Two that has recently built a few homes considered a private road, and the city will not pick up their trash, nor will they pave it. That's why I wanted clarification on this. And perhaps Alderman Dowd, because he's been looking.
I'm going to call on Alderman Jettie. You had your hand up?
Yes, I, so, yes, it means that, it means exactly what it says, that there is, that the city does not assume responsibility for the maintenance of the road. So that includes, you know, building, paving it, plowing it, or any of those things. And secondly, that the city will not, does not have any liability for any damages that might result from the use thereof. That's right, that's right out of the statute that enables them to build a house on an unapproved street with our permission. As far as the trash pickup, my understanding is, is that they are close enough to the accepted portion of Robey Street that if they put their barrels out on their, their property line of this new lot would actually bisect, it's adjacent to the approved part of Robey Street. So it would be, you know, if they put their barrels out there, they would get trash pickup. If they keep the barrels on the private road, there would not be trash pickup.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I had researched this on the Manchester Street issue, and both with Matt Sullivan and with DPW. And no, there are, there'll be no trash collection, no plowing on private roads for a number of reasons, which people can research if they want to. But, and you can't bring your barrels to the end of the street and expect the city to pick them up. They won't do that.
Alderman Cathy?
Based on his comments, I'm going to withdraw because I had a different understanding based on what came before the Planning Board, but.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alden Lopez?
I just would like to ask Corporation Council for their opinion of the amendments that we're working on. And then additionally, this probably sounds like a stupid question, but since we, this is over 110 years since the road was conceived, and we don't do these petitions very much. Where the petition includes a specific address, does that create any complications if later we have to amend the address for any future projects, like trying to get E911 up to date or something along those lines? Two questions for Attorney Bolton.
Well, I think the E91, E911 protocols were taken into consideration by the Fire Marshal's Office when they assigned the 19 Robey Street address to this parcel. So if the legislature changes the law and requires us to renumber everything, this will be included in that. But I, I don't anticipate that happening. That's going to be the same situation, you know, with every property. If the legislature requires it, we'll have to do it. But I don't think it presents a particular problem in this case. I've got no opinion on the trash collection. As far as I know, my office was not asked to review that. And it's a new question, which would take some research before I could give an informed opinion on that. I have every reason to believe that the situation is exactly as Attorney Westgate and Alderman Jettie described it. So if this is what the Fire Marshal's Office desires, it's, I see no legal impediment. If any of you wish to have written confirmation from the Fire Marshal's Office, that's, that's up to you.
Alderman, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no, no issue with what the Fire Marshal. My only concern, and I know it sounds like a silly one, but I don't want anybody to come later on. We, we do have a case where, with a very angry builder in Ward Two, that's my constituent, which is why I'm involved in it, that is very upset that he can't get trash pickup. He was told could not bring it to the end of the street. If that is the case, then he could bring it to the end of the street as was spoken to the 19 Robey property. So I want to have equity and fairness. I want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. And that, because Alderman Dowd and I will both be getting those phone calls because we know that he's listening. So if we can, I know Matt Sullivan, soon-to-be-director Sullivan is on the line. I hate to put him on the spot. He may not be able to answer this question. I don't see anybody from Public Works there. But I, if we could maybe get some more information, I really am concerned about it because we've both been going round and round for months on this one.
Mr. Sullivan is here.
I'd be happy to address this question for the record. Matt Sullivan, currently the Planning Director for the City of Nashua. The uncertainty that Alderman Cathy referred to at the Planning Board level was that this specific situation is not, is a bit of an unclear one in that we were not certain whether to treat it as a private driveway or as a private road. Therefore, there was some consideration that traffic, trash pickup may in fact be provided to the site based on its unique status at the cap of the road as it stands. In speaking to representatives from the Public Works Department, it will ultimately come to solid waste to make a decision. It is not similar to the Manchester Street situation, which involves multiple private units on a larger private road. And therefore, there is a differentiation, albeit we do not know exactly what will happen with this specific proposal this evening. That was the uncertainty that we spoke to at the Planning Board level, however. And I want to make that very clear, that there is a difference in the two circumstances.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. While we're on this subject matter, and this is really for the benefit of some of the newer Aldermen, but being on infrastructure for a while as Chairman, we get these occasional blips like this. City, property within the city is coming down to, you know, it's getting over, I'm not saying overbuilt, but what was once considered a vacant lot now is being occupied. But the street numbers have been numbered. And the system up in Conquet, all, in case you do not know, but all 911 calls go to Conquet, from Conquet it gets fed out to the individual communities. So that's the E. It stands for Enhanced 911 System. They can tell exactly where the call is being made from and everything. So it is imperative. We have the authority as a municipality to grant an exception, and we have in the past, such as like an address number 19, and then the next one would be off-numbered or something like that, just to allow, you know. And at some future point, we may need to renumber the city if we ever get to that. But we had several examples, such as New Searl's Road that I can think of and other different things. So if you have questions of what the E911, what it basically means, but I'm glad to see that this one is very simple. It seems to meet the Fire Marshal's approval, which means it meets Conquet's approval. I don't have any problem with making Conquet frowned on occasion, but, you know, it just seems to meet the standard, so I'm content with this. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, did you want to add something to that?
I would like to apologize. I intended to read this letter. I did receive an email this morning from Fire Marshal Pulio at 9:25 a.m. stating, "Good morning, Matt. I met with Mr. Plant on Robey Street yesterday morning to view the site to make sure it will meet our requirements. After viewing the site, the Fire Marshal's Office has no concern with this project moving forwards. I also spoke to the Fire Marshal this evening just before the meeting. He confirmed that I could represent, that he did in fact confirm that the site complies with his expectations." Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion is to amend with the copy that was given, handed out this evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And for final action, let's voice the pleasure. Alderman Lopez.
We just voted to amend, right?
Right.
Start to vote on the final piece?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Requested meet in joint convention with trustees of the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the trustees of Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries for Tuesday, March 22, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Appointments by the mayor. To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Adriana Lopera Espitia of 137 Chestnut Street, Nashua, and Gwendolyn McCaloff of 11 Apple Tree Green, Nashua, to the Board of Registars for terms to expire December 31, 2024, and Sandra Pratt of 24 Gingras Drive, Nashua, and Rosemary Ford of 22 Nova Road, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for terms to expire March 1, 2025, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointments by the mayor as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committee. With no objection, I will declare the report of the February 16, 2022 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments.
Community Development Director.
There being no objection, I will confirm the appointment of Matthew Sullivan, 229 Main Street, Nashua, as the Community Development Director within definite term. Mr. Sullivan, would you come forward for the oath of office?
That's good. Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as Community Development Director of the City of Nashua according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire. So help you God. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 22008, establishing an expendable trust fund for 14 Court Street expenses funded by appropriations.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-22-008. And allow, I'd like to brief comments on my motion, please. Thank you, Madam President. Folks, if there's any questions on this, please go to 14 Court Street and take a look at it. The building is tired. It's been a property of the city for an awful long time. Its history was once, was a fire station. It was vacated in 1971, and since then, it was brought back to life to look at with the former mayor's street of theater that was located in it. Within it, there is the Peacock Players, different other community groups. My own daughters took Irish step dancing at that facility. And so it has a connection with the community, particularly with the youth, and to bring it. But again, you know, I have been there. I have used the bathrooms there. I've seen the, you know, the theater itself get very, very tired. And at the whim of a city budget, at times, we kind of meet a crunch. Does it, money really go into it? It's very easy to take a pencil and an eraser and cross something off a line item. But if we put it into an expendable trust, what we will be doing is earmarking nominal amount of money into this project to help maintain this valuable asset for the community. So therefore, I urge you to vote with me in support of this. It's something of a gem to, as firefighters, it does have some historical content. I guess the horse's names that ran out of the building was Ash and Cinder, go figure. But anyways, but the, it does have a historical, historical content to the city. And so therefore, I think it's well worth to have the trust fund. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Lopez.
I would echo some of what Alderman O'Brien said. The building being characterized as, you know, the reason we're keeping it is because of the fire relays. That may be true, but that is not the reason I, I was, that's knowledge to me. But I do know that when we were talking about the Performing Arts Center from the very beginning, there was great concern from the community, the community performance community, I mean, the community performers, that we would be building a performing arts center designed to bring in large-scale audience acts and outside performers at the detriment of them. We wouldn't be remembering that they needed a place to perform. We might be losing the community theater. And for people who may not participate in that or experience it themselves, I can see how this might look like we're trying to add meaning to a building, but I don't think we are. I think that building has served a tremendous amount of need over the years. I've seen many shows in both the upper and the lower theater. And it does have a heritage to it. I think it's an essential resource for our, our theater community. I think it's important to support them as they come back from COVID because a lot of their shows were entirely shut down, if not heavily scaled back, due to occupancy numbers and that type of things. And they deserve as much of a chance to return to normal as anybody else does. And I think they enrich our community by doing that. So I've been personally an advocate for improving Court Street Theater and supporting the groups that interact with it for years because of its place in the community, not because of any particular operational attributes that it has. I do recognize that as, you know, one of our first fire stations, it has historical relevance. And I find that using it as a community center and for community performance groups, and in the varied ways that we are developing for it, it maintains that historical legacy without just becoming a shrine that we have to pay money to maintain. So I consider this to be an efficient and an effective use of the space as it is currently configured. We have liquid therapy, a business operating out of there, generating revenue for us, increasing traffic to that area, keeping it viable. We have the potential for many more community performances to take place there. There are artist lofts inside as well, supporting local artists who need space to do their work and to create. And it's in good proximity to the public library, the expanded parking that the public library offers when they have shows. It's a great region, and I would, I would consider it poorly conceived to suggest simply removing it and sending groups that have performed in Nashua for years just to go find space elsewhere in downtown, where that's not quite as easy as it may appear to some people to be. There are not a lot of large, open space buildings downtown. It was a challenge, just the reason that the Performing Arts Center wasn't suggested there until Alex opened up was because there wasn't going to be a place big enough. So I would say personally, none of my motivation was for fire switches or alarm relays. It was because that's a hub for the community, not just downtown, but for the entire city. And it's important for us to keep it. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
I would like to make a motion to take this resolution and move it back to budget. And could I speak to that, please?
Yes.
The reason I want to do it, number one, is from my understanding, when I looked at it, Alderman Clemmons was the main endorser of this legislation. Unfortunately, Alderman Clemmons wasn't at the Budget Committee last week to speak to it when we recommended it for approval, of which I did. Second, and not to put Ms. Kleiner's, or put words in her mouth, she was called on to speak to it. I don't think she was prepared to speak to it, but did an admirable job. And finally, since it came to. And finally, since it came to trust funds, I had uncovered some information as far as we have a city trust fund now. And I just thought that I had, since I had uncovered some more information, I'd like to move that back to committee. I'm not saying I'm for or against the resolution, I would simply like to talk about it more. There's no time limit on this. If we pass it in another month, it doesn't do anything.
Motion is to re-refer. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I appreciate the enthusiastic support from Alderman O'Brien and Alderman Lopez, I'm sure others. I had requested through the chairman to hold this at the committee level because I was on vacation last week and was unable to attend that meeting. So I'm not sure why I did move forward, but I have no objection to it going back to the Budget Committee meeting to be discussed further.
Alderman Cle, and I'll get over here.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be very honest with you. When I spoke to Director Kleiner about this, one of the comments that she had made is that the leases are coming up. And I think one of the key things that Director Kleiner had spoke to was relative to the good faith that we give to the people who are renting and leasing, et cetera, and that we're showing them that we're going to be using it. The trust fund that I believe Alderman Sullivan was speaking about is the city building trust fund. And I asked Director Kleiner specifically, what is that money used for? And she told me that it's primarily for City Hall, but that at times, it has been used to the hunt, therefore showing that the hunt is not self-sustaining itself. Public works as well as public health buildings. So we have used the money for other things. Right now, it's sitting at $269,767.87. There have been building ground maintenance, security equipment that has been spent this year. Excuse me. So the money does get used. If someone feels that that's just too much money that's sitting there, well, that is their opinion. But I do feel that moving forward with this, where we've got leases that are coming up and pending, we're only going to be putting it further back. And perhaps Alderman Dowd can speak to when the Budget Committee would actually be able to hear this. So I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Alderman Kathy.
I was also on the Budget Committee, and Alderman Sullivan and I had quite a few questions about how the expendable trust fund works. I believe we both, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, came from a point of view of why. Why do we need this action in order to take care of this building? Director Kleiner said she would send us some materials, and she did send us a report based on the expenses and revenues on the building. And this action says that we can only put in the equivalent amount of the revenues a building generates. For next year, that's $40,000. That means we've only put in 40, which is 80. But the projected expenses are, I believe, 120. So that's another $40,000 that we're short. So we're not even getting up to the maintenance cost to take care of the building, which is a far cry from letting the building be revenue neutral at, you know, if we're lucky. And then on top of that, the roof didn't even come out of maintenance costs. To my understanding, it came out of capital improvements. So if we need to keep spending big expenses on things, on the building, that are going to come out of funds elsewhere in the budget, then having this trust fund, which has been bleeding money for at least the past three years, probably longer, I don't know if the expendable trust fund, A, does the job that it's supposed to do, and B, is worthwhile in the long run because it's going to require a lot more money from the budget anyway. And so even with those thoughts, I think it does deserve more conversation back on the committee level. I'm not saying I'm definitely against it, but I would love to have more conversation about why this is the way to go when there are, I believe there are other actions and other opportunities. I understand that there are tenants and they want to have good faith, but I think showing good faith is doing the due diligence to make sure that we don't just pass an action or a resolution, but rather we solve the problem long-term and think about second and third order effects and how we can actually get this building to the desired goal that we want. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Yeah, I'm not really for putting it back in the Budget Committee. I just look like it's just going to delay it longer. If we're putting this money into another trust fund or we're not putting it in any trust fund, honestly, what's going to happen is it's going to be forgotten, this building's going to be forgotten about because there's other buildings that are going to be looked at as more important. And this isn't just a historical thing. I mean, I went there as a kid. It's a forestation, it's a performing arts. My daughter went there for drama. Now she's studying biology, so obviously that didn't work. But you know, at the end of the day, I'm just afraid, and Chairman O'Brien said it perfectly, that this building will get lost in the shuffle. And it's a great location, a lot of parking, people can eat outside without any barriers. You know, it's something that I think if it goes back and we lose tenants or we, people start getting frustrated and they go somewhere else, then we're going to lose that building. And Director Kleiner did a great job sending us information. That building does need a lot of work. And to Alderman Kathy's point, you know, $40,000, $80,000 isn't going to be all the money we're going to need to fix that building. But it's a start to something that no one can touch for something else. And I think Alderman Dowd said it in the Budget Committee or Finance Committee, that we still have to put the money in there every year. We can't, it doesn't just automatically go in there. So we still, as a Board of Aldermen, would have to do that. So I think we should, should keep it today and not have the amendment.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, as Chair of Budget, I have no problem going back to budget. I don't know when we can schedule it in, but we'll do our best. Couple of things, Junior Actus Singis also uses that building, and I, my daughters have all been in that, number of performances there. The other thing, expendable trust funds are not someplace we hide money. It takes legislative action to put something in, and there are specific spending parameters on money taken out. So, and it's in the budget and the budget book every budget year. So it's not hidden. It's very transparent. But if you want to go back to budget, it's fine with me.
Alderman Kell.
Thank you, Madam President. I also, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth either, but I didn't get the sense from the speakers tonight that any of my colleagues are against maintaining the building or doing some of these projects or funding the projects. I think that my questions personally are procedural in nature. We have a number of trust funds that I don't know why we can't already use. We have capital improvements, we have general accounts, we have downtown improvement funds. So my confusion is why, why we need another one when it seems like we may already have the mechanisms in place to do this work already. So I would definitely support at least having a longer conversation about it so that at least when I cast my vote, I know that it's informed. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I'm inclined to move this forward. I think that I've heard about leases. I think that the theater is a diamond in the rough that we have here in Nashua. And having been on the Board of the Symphony, I've been in that building many, many times. It's underutilized and it does need some attention. And having its own trust fund will allow us to make sure that that money goes directly into this building that really is, you know, has a lot of potential. And I know Alderman Gidge put in the artist studios, like, there's a lot in there that can be happening. And as we become a city that is starting to be known for arts and culture and being outside and coming downtown, I want to make sure that we continue to prioritize this building.
Alderman Clemmons.
Madam President, I motion to move the vote.
Thank you. Motion before us is to move the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No division. If you're in favor of moving the question, raise your hand, please. One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, that passes. The motion before us is to re-refer. All those in favor of re-referring, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Can we do a roll call? Let's do a roll call.
Alderman O'Brien?
No.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
No.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Gobia?
Yes.
Alderman Kathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
No.
Alderwoman Timmons?
No.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have nine yeses. Excuse me, nine yays and six nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 22-008 is re-referred to the Budget Committee.
Second reading of Resolution R-22-009, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Police Commissioners and UFPO Local 645 Professional Employees of the Nashua Police Department from July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2026.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-22-009, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, this went unanimously through budget, and the requests for percentage increases are very reasonable based on a lot of history of negotiations. And they've also agreed to the city's healthcare, which is a big step. We're trying to get that from all our unions, and they agreed without reservations. So they've taken all the steps that we've been asking of unions to take and therefore, and the recommendation of the chief, I would suggest that we pass.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 22-009 is duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R-22-10, approving the cost items of sidebar agreements between the Nashua Board of Police Commissioners and the five Nashua Police Department unions regarding a police department recruiting incentive.
Alderman Kathy.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-20, or yeah, R-22-010.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Dowd.
Again, unanimous decision by Budget Committee to bring forward with a recommendation to pass. This money is coming directly out of the police account. There's no additional funding required out of the budget. And it's, it makes the police officers another set of recruiters to get officers onto the police force.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 22-10 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O-22-004, prohibiting a right turn on red from Adventure Way onto Daniel Webster Highway.
Alderman Tebow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage on O-22-004, prohibiting a right turn on red from Adventure Way onto Daniel Webster Highway. I'd like to speak to it, please.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you. So, right turn on red. So the DPW contacted me a couple of months ago about this, and they were getting some complaints about, you know, since they put the gas station, the BJ's Gas Station, on Daniel Webster Highway, that when people are doing the U-turn, people are taking a right turn on red, it's getting more dangerous than it was before. It's always been a smaller problem, but now that there's more traffic, it's definitely been an issue. So they reached out to me, and I said, that's not my ward, go see Alderman Kathy. And I said, if he doesn't, you know, sponsor it, I will because on the other side of the road is Ward 8. And so it's my people that are the ones that are concerned about it, even though this is technically in Ward 7. So what's happening is people are coming out of the Bluestone Apartments and the Lewisburg Square Apartments, and people who are eating at Pizza Hut, I guess, as well. And the only way out of that way is to take the U-turn if you want to go north, or to go all the way down and, you know, go down and take a right down by Barnes and Noble and Shaw's. So it was there to try to protect people from, you know, getting into accidents because people aren't waiting all the time, you know, they're supposed to stop. But if they see an opening, they take it, and then people are taking U-turn because they have the light. It's potential for risk and for accidents. So since that, since we've put this in, gas prices have skyrocketed. Now you've got all kinds of traffic going in and out of there. And so I think honestly, and I hope, I hope Matt Sullivan's still here, I think there needs to be a bigger fix for that whole thing because it's beginning to get really messy down there. And there's going to be other problems, not just this right turn on red, but there's going to be other things that we need to work on because we're starting to get more emails about it in general. So I think it's a bigger issue, but for now, we started with this. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward. I had some questions. I did look through the discussion at infrastructure, and I'm actually pretty knowledgeable about this area. I do go here for gas, so I know how busy it can get there. I don't, I do know that Matt Sullivan is here. I was wondering if he could speak to the end of the memos that the Planning Department is looking at the bigger solution. And I wanted to know what that is because I always get worried that we're making a short-term decision to try to fix something when there's a longer-term solution with, you know, the businesses that we've heard from and the businesses that will be going in.
Can I just add one thing?
Director Sullivan.
Good evening, members of the Board. Matt Sullivan, the Community Development Division Director. Good evening, everyone. It feels good. So I also believe that Dan Hudson is on, and I'm not going to put him on the spot of speaking to this, but the implication there is that we also recognize, as the neighboring owners made you aware this evening, that there is other potential development proposed in this area and approved development in this area. And that included additional traffic impacts that were contemplated as part of the Planning Board's review of the application at that time. So the comment made to larger development trends in the area is simply to say that we need to be more deliberate as we go through traffic study and corridor study to ensure that any proposed developments, and even those that are approved currently, are adequately mitigating their traffic. What I will say is that we have actually been in direct contact with BJ's about the current condition and the approved condition, and asked them to supply additional traffic study data for us to review and consider. And we may in fact compel them, I'm comfortable saying this on the record, we may in fact compel them to return to the Planning Board to make circulation changes to their site to deal with these conditions that we're witnessing. We believe, not only because of the current gas price trends, but also because of the design of the site, that the traffic impact was underestimated and therefore, the impacts to Adventure Way and the DWI Highway Corridor were not adequately planned for. And so we're taking a more comprehensive look at this intersection, certainly based on that contemplated development, but we do intend to intervene with BJ's directly as they have created, in combination with other businesses, as a compounded effect, an unsafe intersection condition here. So that addresses your question.
It does. If I could have one follow-up? Yes, thank you very much. So I guess that's really good information. I understand that there's increased traffic here. And what I'm, you know, what I'm trying to wrap my head around because I'm looking at this amazing traffic study, if you've ever looked at one, they're quite interesting to look at. But I think my question is around, is the, is the attention to this spot just because we have additional cars? Because that right turn from Adventure Way is not the BJ's people? Because you have to go in and then around and back onto... So those right turns and those U-turns should be what has already been going on the whole time. So I'm sort of, I'm trying to figure out where...
Yeah, absolutely. I think it has been exacerbated. My opinion would be that it has been exacerbated by the BJ's development, but certainly this is not a new condition. But I think it's been amplified based on that new development. I don't know if it's appropriate to call on Dan Hudson if he still is, has joined us this evening. He may be able to speak more adequately to some of this. If he's not available, I can certainly provide some additional information.
He's available. He's on? Mr. Hudson, would you care to join us?
Thanks, Mr. Director. No, that's correctly described. This is an existing problem that has, it's been there for a while. It is exacerbated by the additional level of traffic. What you have at that location is a high number of U-turns for the reasons Alderman Tebow noted. To reverse direction, people have to use that U-turn. And at the same time, some people are trying to turn right on red. It's not a great location sight distance-wise because you're coming up the vertical hill there. You're looking left, you got left turn traffic beside you. You got a couple of lanes going northbound on DW Highway. And now as of late, you have some added congestion because of BJ's traffic. So it's conditions that's existed. We would have recommended that it be changed regardless, but it has become more recently more problematic because of the additional congestion.
Seven hands, just one. I'll start over here this time. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. We heard this in infrastructure. And I don't want to go deep into the history, but you've got to remember, right turn on... I don't want to go deep into the history, but you've got to remember right turn on red lights. Some of you, you know, don't remember the seventies. I vaguely do myself. Some of you weren't born during the seventies. But the thing is, we went through a fuel crisis where there wasn't enough fuel, and, uh, shows history, look in today, history repeats itself, and fuel prices went out. But for a vehicle to sit at a red light and dead idle, there was great concern. So, uh, it was federal change, and they said, "Yes." You know, all states had, you had to stop completely at a red light, no turning at all. Uh, that's why the arrow, the green arrow was invented. But because of the fuel shortage, then they came out with the right turn on red, unless the municipality looked at it and then determined that it was hazardous to do so. We have now come to that with this particular intersection. So, therefore, that's why it passed the committee, but I just wanted to bring the background information on why we do have, why we do have the authority to limit the right turn on red. I mean, prior to nineteen seventy, everybody had to come to a complete stop. Now, as far as the BJ's, I wish they had better signage. I don't know, maybe somebody can talk to them. But there is an exit on the DW for heading northbound. So, there really is not a need for the BJ customer to go down back to Adventure Way and then to come up and then to go through the light. Uh, you know, usually I try to avoid lights, although it is against the law to, uh, go on somebody's property to avoid them. But the thing is, uh, there is a way out, but unfortunately, the public isn't using it, which created this. So, therefore, uh, if it went through infrastructure, we approved it, and I hope that answers some of your, you know, questions of why we have the authority to do so. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, the, the truth is, I think what people have stated here, the, um, entrance into the, that, um, BJ's gas station is what's backing up. It's not the people leaving the gas station because they're coming out, and I too, like Alderwoman Kelly has, use it quite often. Um, the issue that I see is that they're coming out of BJ's, they're doing a right turn on red, and then we have a U-turn, um, as well. I know in, um, in Concord, they put up different kinds of lights that say, you know, you can't right turn on red when someone's doing a U-turn and so on. They, they have these big giant signs. But I, I have a couple of questions, and perhaps, um, Mr. Hudson can answer them. In the downtown area, we have right turn on reds, but we have restrictions like off of Amherst Street onto Main Street during certain hours. Um, would that be something that would allow for this, but during certain times not to allow for it? Because I don't think that this is going to affect, the right turn on red's going to affect the, um, the Adventure Way, but I think maybe if we allowed them to happen during the really not busy times or something, much like what we do even on Main Street, would something like this help, or is it just kind of a waste of time then to do it?
Mr. Hudson.
Sure, thank you. Um, yeah, I suppose, you know, in the, in the late hours of the evening, uh, if it's not busy, then it wouldn't be as needed, but, um, and, and the thi, one thing to note too is that lane that you can make a right turn from is a shared through right lane. So, this, the, the only people that are turning right on red are, you know, the first or second person in line if those people want to turn right versus go through. Uh, so, a lot of people are trapped behind the throughs, uh, during the red anyway. So, I, I don't think this change will have a significant effect on traffic conditions in the area. I think, uh, it's more of a safety, safety issue, and it was brought forward based upon concerns that we received. But, but if the Board wanted to, uh, entertain any hours restriction, um, certainly they could do that, but I, I, I wouldn't do that during, uh, normal business hours or on Saturdays. Saturday, this last Saturday, I heard there was a lot of, uh, issues there as well, so.
Uh, thank you. I'm not suggesting, just wanted to get some ideas. Thank you, Madam.
Alderman Moran.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, so, I take this way home. I live, uh, in Ward Seven, but I work in Ward Eight, and I'll come down Spitbrook and take a left onto DW. And, um, I don't think so much it's the traffic that's coming from Adventure Way. I think it's the human behavior change, because now you're frustrated. You're frustrated that you can't get into CVS, frustrated that you can't get into Best Buy, and now people are coming back onto Adventure Way and just flooring it as fast as they can, uh, or doing a, where I come from is a Massachusetts stop, a slow roll, make sure, uh, nothing's coming, but not paying attention to the U-turn. I think the frustration that's caused by the increased traffic in that area is really causing people to blow through that light. And I, for one, before Lent started, I would visit that Pizza Hut almost frequently, uh, every day if I could. Um, and that U-turn is true. Everyone coming out of that side, you're going to get, uh, sideswiped. I was leaving the CVS the other day, and someone banged that U-turn and entered into the gas station from the wrong, to the wrong entrance where it clearly, I think, says not an entrance. Um, so, there's a lot of frustration in that area that doesn't need further study, uh, for the impact of the area. But I think this motion, uh, this ordinance will help. I think it'll slow people down to think twice before they, you know, take a right into a U-turn. Someone make a U-turn.
Alderman Clemens.
I, I, I agree completely with Alderman Moran on this. I, for me, it's about the traffic that's making the U-turn. Um, I've been in that situation myself, making that U-turn where I almost got into an accident, um, with somebody coming out, making the right hand turn, turn on red. I think, I personally feel that wherever we can have a right-hand turn on red, we should, we should have it. Uh, I even like the left-hand turns on red when they're on one-way streets, like over on, uh, West Hollis Street. I think on, um, I think it's Liberty onto West Hollis Street, you can do that. But it has to be safe, and when you have an entire population of people that live on one side of the road, and the only way that they can turn around and go north is to make a U-turn, then that U-turn has to be safe for them. So, for those reasons, I'm going to support this legislation.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Uh, thank you. I actually wanted to ask, and I don't know if that, if the idea, and maybe this is for Mr. Hudson, um, to restrict the U-turn has ever looked at. Um, I disagree with what was just said, that you can just go a block further, and then you're up, um, and you can get on past the Shaw's. Also, you can go out of some of those apartments the other way. You, I know which ones you're talking about, but like Royal Ridge, you can go through out the other way.
Did, did you have a question for?
My question was, have we ever considered restricting the U-turn? Sorry, I said a lot around the question.
Mr. Hudson.
Uh, thank you. That was talked about, I believe, both when, uh, BJ's came forward with their traffic study, and then later when, um, Costco came forward with their study. Um, that was talked about, but it's a very heavy U-turn movement because of all the residences that want to reverse direction. Um, so, in looking at the number of people, um, that wouldn't have a creative alternative otherwise, they'd have to go further, you know, make, make another U-turn heavier, um, somewhere else. I think, uh, it became a consensus that that was a recommended, uh, approach.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Camo.
Thank you, Madam President. I was actually going to ask the same question. It seemed like a lot of the conversations I centered around the people making the U-turns. And in, in general, I favor things that are less restrictive. I feel like the more we can keep the cars moving, the less they'll be backing up somewhere else. And I know that it's been said that the traffic isn't necessarily the people leaving the gas station, but the fact is there is significant increase because of that. So, it's just increasing the number of cars in the area in general. And people making a right turn in the face of somebody making a U-turn are already doing the wrong thing because you're supposed to be waiting until there's an opening. So, I'm not sure if we further restrict that, if people who are already doing the wrong thing aren't just going to continue doing a different wrong thing. But it will also slow down some people who may have the opportunity to go and now won't be able to if they do follow the instructions of the signage, when it might have been perfectly clear to make their turn, now they're not going to. And that is going to back up, uh, you know, e- everyone else who's trying to get out of that roadway. And my thought, as far as getting rid of the U-turn, was the next light is only a couple of hundred feet up, and I know it is also a busy intersection because it's Spitbrook Road. But the timing of those lights offers a green arrow for U-turns specifically. Uh, the two, the northbound and southbound lanes have the simultaneous lefts. So, that flows pretty well in my experience. I, I don't know what impact this would have on that, but it seems like if our concerns are largely centered around the, the U-turns and not the right turns, that maybe we should be looking at restricting that instead.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, uh, I, I just want to ask a question, uh, having been familiar with, uh, infrastructure changes in Ward Two. What type of infrastructure, thoughts, and would you need to make this happen? Sinage, um, and is that going to be in place before we are making other changes to that intersection? Or taking advantage of the traffic study to find out what the ultimate, um, solutions are? I will tell you that, that I take that U-turn to go north, and, and it's dangerous. So, either you shouldn't be able to take the U-turn when people are taking the right, which would say no right turn on red. So, I'd be in favor of what we're asking right now, but how long would it take to implement that?
Mr. Hudson.
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure if I fully understood the question. I, I will tell you, what's been looked at is lengthening the southbound left turn. That's something that we know, there's not quite enough storage in. That was looked at, uh, as part of the Costco study, and that's planned to be, uh, a change is planned to be made by Costco. The, uh, the right turn on red, as I said, I don't, I don't foresee, uh, significant backups. It's more of a safety issue, and it's not, uh, it's not a, I don't think it's going to significantly change things, but it is going to reinforce the fact that we don't believe it's safe to make that maneuver with the U-turns. When the, uh, the Costco development is constructed, that, that will connect through, so there'll be other ways to come and go, um, that may help. Yeah, I, 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 the, the, those are kind of the changes we were talking about. Also, Costco, as part of their offsite development, they're planning to lengthen the turn lanes, um, and may, I believe, even change the configuration where you would have, uh, a left-through lane and a right-turn-only lane, which would, uh, improve some things there because you could maybe have a, a right turn, signalize overlap with another move. So, there are some things in the, in the works, nothing immediate for this change. If it was approved, it would, it would be simply going to put up, putting up no right turn on red sign at the signal on Adventure Way.
Alderman Cathy.
To Alderman Tebow's point, DPW did contact me, uh, I guess, secondly, but, um, and said that Tebow would, would support the, the legislation if I did not. My first question was, "I need a traffic study. I'm not going to do anything without data. It doesn't make any sense." Secondly, the right on red still doesn't make sense because a majority of people who are going northbound know that you can meet BJ's going northbound out of that one exit. Though, there's a very low probability of people that are going to loop back around BJ's, back down, which you can do, and then go back up to make the right on red. It's not expedient. It doesn't make sense. So, the majority of the traffic is SkyVenture, CBS, which already has a very, very compact parking lot. Is, I do not take my Ford F-150 in there because it is very difficult to get out. Uh, and the same thing with, uh, Best Buy, if you want to loop back down around or go in to the garage or whatever. So, in my opinion, a majority of the traffic is businesses that are not related to BJ's, and they will be prohibited, especially when the shopping season comes up, and then even more so when Costco gets built and gets connected. I think the backups are going to get worse, and I think the right on red, there's been no accidents reported, I don't think, at that U-turn for right on reds and U-turns. So, maybe it has been dangerous anecdotally, but hasn't been an uptick in accidents. So, I don't think that it's necessarily a problem that hasn't already existed, and I don't think this solves the problem either.
Alderman Tebow.
Um, so, I, I mean, I think this was a problem even before BJ's, so it's, it's not, uh, probably strictly for that. And, and Mr. Hudson can certainly, um, attest to what kind of complaints they were getting before, because obviously, it got to a point where they asked me to, to sponsor this bill. I just wanted to address something Alderman Camo said that, so, we have two sets of apartments, Bluestone and, um, Lewisburg Square, and you have Royal Crest, but to Alderwoman Kelly's point, Royal Crest can get out the other way. Now, of course, if they're closer to there, now we're going to make them go all through the whole Royal Crest to get out. That's fine. Let them go. We don't care, right? The other two sets of apartments, you, you're still talking thousands of people, right? So, now you're going to tell them, "Don't take the U-turn. Go down to the light. We're going to make your life uncomfortable so people don't have to obey the right turn on red law." Right? So, let them go right on red. We don't care. Um, we want the other people to move all the way down there. So, why should we inconvenience them for people who are breaking the law anyway? But that's the part I don't get. Um, and, you know, thank you to Alder, Alder, um, and Cle for the, and, and Mr. Hudson to talking about those lanes. So, there's only two lanes there. So, what happens is, if you're going to Shaw's and you're going straight, you're blocking every single person that wants to go right anyway, and it backs up, it backs up that way. Um, and I know, I go to CVS, and then I go to Shaw's. So, I know, sometimes I'm the one blocking everybody. So, I just wanted to point a few of those things out, and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Cle, and then Alderman Clemens.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I, truthfully, I think this was a pre-BJ's. BJ's may be exacerbating it, but I think it was a pre-J, BJ's issue, and I say that because, um, I have used that CVS for a pharmacy, and I have done a lot of shopping at Best Buy, and I turn in on that way when I'm coming the way I'm coming. I can tell you that I have right turned on red there, and I am careful, and I'm very cautious. And you get partway out there, and suddenly that person is you, because they have the, the, uh, light. I can't see that they have the light. Everything is paused, everything there, the light turns, and there've been some near misses. So, to say that there were no accidents there, if our Public Works is getting complaints, and this is becoming an issue, and they've gone and they've looked at it, I feel confident that this is something we should pass. I'm grateful that there will be other studies being done, excuse me, sorry, as more businesses, um, come into there and so on. But I think this is a stop, get, fix, uh, issue. We can't ask all those people. And I've been in line multiple cycles to do that, that turn or to do a U-turn there. So, um, I think it's something we should pass this evening.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. I, um, I agree with, uh, what Alderman Tebow previously said about the residents who live there. You can't restrict the U-turn because we don't have a viable option for them to go the other way. And, and, and that's the, that's the problem. And even when, before BJ, this was a problem before BJ's, and actually was a worse problem before BJ's because in addition to the, in addition to the right turn, the parking lot was also at the same entrance. So, you could have somebody making a left turn into the parking lot and crossing over where you were turning right. That doesn't exist anymore. That problem is solved with the new, uh, BJ's gas station. However, the, those that are still making that U-turn, it is a problem. And so, I, I think we need to take deference to the people who live in the neighborhoods who are, who need to utilize the Daniel Webster Highway and make that, uh, U-turn and give them the preferential treatment that they deserve by living in, in a neighborhood where unfortunately, the only way that they can go north conveniently is to make a U-turn. And they shouldn't have to do it fighting somebody else, uh, coming out of that intersection. I know that, you know, it's not, it, it, it's not perfect. It's not a perfect solution. It, it certainly, you know, I wish in a perfect world, we could, we could have, everybody would do the right thing, and we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, making laws like this. But unfortunately, um, I, I can attest myself to being in close situations. And the fact that there hasn't been an accident there, if that's the case, we're lucky. So, again, I'm going to vote in favor of this because I, I am giving deference to those who live in the neighborhoods up there.
Alderman Gobea.
Thank you, Madam President.
Sorry.
Thank you, Madam President.
I'll get it.
I, I have to agree with Alderman Clemens on this. You know, I kind of sat on the fence. I did vote yes in committee on it, but I do feel for the people who live in the surrounding area, taking away that U-turn just isn't a option that we really have, and I'll be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Okay, the motion before us is to recommend, uh, is to, for final passage of ordinance twenty-two zero zero four. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries. Ordinance twenty-two oh four is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R twenty-two fourteen relative to the transfer of forty-four thousand four hundred dollars from account seven zero 70100. General contingency, interdepartmental 179 library, accounting classification 53, professional and technical services, to fund half the cost of a facility assessment and master plan for the library building.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Tebow and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R. 2215, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the National Board of Police Commissioners and Teamsters Local 633 from July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2026.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Camo, Alderman Gouvea, Alderman Kathy, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons. And given its first reading, I'll refer that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R. 2216, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $5 million for Franklin Street school building improvements.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cle, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons and myself. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee, Board of Education and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, March 21st, 2022 at 7:00 PM.
I believe it's going to be at 6:00 PM.
Okay, well, this says seven. Okay, 6:00 PM. Thank you, Alderman Dow.
First reading of resolution R. 2217, authorizing the mayor to enter into a Second Amendment to the 14 Court Street lease for Unit B with Liquid Therapy LLC.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dow, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O. 2210, amending the land use code by adding provisions regarding synthetic nicotine and electronic smoking device sales in lounges.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Tebow. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the Planning Board and schedule a public hearing on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Period for general public comment. Tonight we have Julie Sage. Please give your name and address for the record and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Julie Sage. I live at 38 Deerwood Drive and I'm here because I was lied about and defamed in the last meeting and I need to set the record straight. Before I start with this, I would like to thank the four Aldermen who specifically said that it was wrong for people to be laughing at and mocking me while I was speaking. One thing is I was accused of having fear in my voice. That was not fear, it was me talking quickly because three minutes is not enough to discuss COVID and masks. Besides being accused of having this fear, this lady talks as if she knew who I was, but I have never met nor seen her in my entire life. I cannot quote each thing she lied about, so I'm going to paraphrase. She claimed that the information that I gave was taught in school. There is literally no school in America that is teaching about CCL11 and the brain. She said that I needed guidance and needed help in understanding the statistics and claimed the information I gave was outdated. She then continued to say that we needed to protect our children so we don't continue to spiral down in an echo chamber of fear and she pointed at the screen where I was, acting like I have some mental illness. She accused me of getting my information off of Facebook and TikTok and not from talking to people and all of these statements are just false. I made the mistake that someone on the board would have known who I was, so let me tell you a little bit about who I am. As far as we can find, I am the most awarded team with different experiments, inventions in different areas of science. I'm also the team who has won the most spots to have experiments flown to space with eight already in space and two more this year. I was the New Hampshire State winner for the Discovery Education 3M Young Scientist Challenge and placed in the top 10 of the international, sorry, out of breath, XPRIZE Next Gen Mask Challenge, which was redesigning face masks to make them better. There was around 1,000 entries and I, and I made it to the top 10, beating out top universities and engineering firms. I also have two provisional patents on my face mask design. When it comes to masks, I am the expert. I also have ran my own science news on YouTube and Twitter for the last six years. I'm really out of breath. I get my information from my, actually talking to epidemiologists from around the world, pediatric doctors in multiple areas of pediatrics, cardiologists, emergency room doctors and nurses, et cetera. Since March 2020, I switched completely and have now only been doing news on Twitter dealing specifically with COVID. During this time, I was the first to say we need to be more concerned about variants, that it was mutating faster than it was supposed to be. I got Apple to look at how to clean their phones. I was the one that got people to stop reprinting masks because of bacterial infection and other things. I was also the first to say that we dropped masks too soon and people could catch COVID outside. The list goes on forever, which was all proven. I understand physics and I understand particles. To think that I need guidance and understanding when some of the top epidemiologists in the world follow me is insulting. I'm kind of shocked that a complete stranger was allowed to talk as if she knew anything about me. People try to say that masks are about control, but they want to control us, especially kids in every aspect. She kept saying her children, I am not her child, no one owns me. This also goes beyond ridicule. In public, my family has been coughed on, spat on by adults and I even had a lit cigarette thrown at me the other day, all because about wearing masks. When we contacted the police about this, they said that they will do absolutely nothing about it. Nashua does not protect its children and this will happen again now that the ordinance is rescinded. One more thing about who I am, as I, that's it, okay.
Daniel Sage?
Hello, my name is Daniel Sage. I'm at 38 Deerwood. Um, I'm actually going to talk about something a little bit different. I let my daughter speak for herself. There was something that was said quite often that had me confused. So I'm a, I did a little bit of politics. I ran for independent in California governor. Grew up in Iowa, learned that law is important. You guys actually have a great counsel here, legal counsel. But during the last meeting, a lot of people kept saying mask mandate. You guys had an ordinance. You're the legislation branch. You don't have mandates. Executive branch has mandates through departments and judicial branches have mandates. You had an ordinance. It's just not the same thing. The problem when you're using these words wrong is people believe you can't follow a mandate. You actually had a person come up and say that mandates aren't legal. A mandate from a court is very legal. If they tell you you have to get psychiatric help, you have to do it. A mandate from the public health office is mandatory, you have to do it. It causes where younger people also will get confused. If they get told that they have to follow this mandate and then they don't think they have to, or if they think that it's not an ordinance, that it didn't come from legislation, you guys actually did a good job in that. When the governor's office did it, that was a mandate, but you guys went through your branch. So it's just something that I wanted to point out and I'm not for sure how much you guys are getting information from legal specifically about this, but that's something to be very, very careful about. And when people said they don't like mandates, so that's why they were going to rescind it, every ordinance you do is exactly the same thing. So it's also kind of confusing there. So it's just, just one of those things to bring to your guys' attention. Thank you.
Laurie Ordolano?
Laurie Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'd like to thank the board for sending 14 Court Street back to the Budget Committee for review. I'd also like to ask the mayor, you gave a nice presentation on our COVID numbers, but I am wondering what level we're at. Usually you say if we're still at substantial and the website still has us at a substantial rate of transmission and I'd like to know when that's going to change. I'd also like the, to address the removal of the press table in the back of the room. So this is your chamber collectively and I was told that the, now Attorney Bolton is looking at putting a law library back there with some books. I'd kind of like to know. I got my press pass and I'm ready to report and the table's been removed. So I think we should bring our press table back and if you are going to have a law library back there, I think that's terrific. I think you should dedicate a shelf to Right to Know Law because I think we could use some polishing up on that. As far as barriers go, that's coming up tomorrow and I'd like to say I've done quite a bit of work looking at the data and a friend of mine compiled all the surveys and information from February 22nd and March 8th as of today. I think there's a lot of data in there that shows that there is not a lot of support for these barriers. And I'm disappointed in the letter that went out from the mayor because I think that it was not clear and it was convoluted and it had a twisted view on what should be said. And I know, Derek, you're shaking your head no, but really you should allow me to speak and give me the courtesy to do that. And, and then you can state your position on what you see and then some of it's debatable because it's data and the way it's written and I really understand that. But I'm looking at overall the, you know, response from the newspaper, the petitions that were signed and the letters that are in both sets of information. Finally, I'd like to, and I'd like to speak on safety. I really think that the two new chiefs had a private meeting with Alderman O'Brien and Tim Cummings to address the safety issues. I think these safety issues have been raised repeatedly by the public and I think our safety officials should put in writing their concerns. No short, small meetings with pro-barrier people on how we're making accommodations. I think it's reasonable that that be in writing. Those are safety issues for our citizens. So please ask your fire and police department to put in writing the safety issues. Finally, I'd like to let you know that I was up at the State House today giving testimony on the ombudsman bill for the Right to Know Office. I think that was very promising. It looks like that's going to pass. That will allow citizens to file a Right to Know challenge for $25 with an office, the ombudsman office for Right to Know, who will take the case and assist you with the challenge. I think it'll offer some nice benefits to controlling costs, getting answers and creating better transparency for New Hampshire. Thank you.
Karen Bill?
Good evening, Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place in Nashua. While I was reading through the 350-page Board of Alderman packet this evening, or this afternoon, I was puzzled by the support for the keeping outside dining like someone said it was going to go away. And then I was informed that the mayor had sent a letter asking if people, if residents wanted it to be continued like it was going away. So this, it really puzzled me and kind of made me think a little bit about how information is disseminated sometimes in, in letters, maybe from the mayor, but from a believable office, like for the police commission and $4 million waiting in the wings for the PAC and to get people to vote for it. And then there's not really $4 million waiting in the wings. But really I'm here to speak about correspondence that I sent to the entire board. I was advised that when I send something to the entire board, yes, you get it and it's in the meeting minutes, but what I wasn't prepared for was no replies. Zero replies. I've had a lengthy conversation with city council about Right to Know. As you know, I sent four, three emails to Director Cummings asking for minutes for the barrier meetings. When I said Right to Know on the fourth email that I sent to all of you, then I got a reply that said, I have no such document. I talked about this last time I was here. The minutes were on the website. I found them last week sometime when I downloaded them, they were blank. I can't make this up. To file a Right to Know request, to get a simple answer to a question is insulting and acting in bad faith. The city continues to act in bad faith. Do you think a resident, 90,000 residents in Nashville, let's say 60,000 of them, I think I'm pretty close, their voting age, how would you like 60,000 Right to Know requests to get a sample, a simple answer to a question? We just want records that should be made available under the law. It is a law. It's a law that you have to register your card. Do you think that Attorney Jettie gets a pass because he has Esquire behind his name and he doesn't want to pay to register his card? No. If I were employed with a company and I broke the law, I'd be fired. There's no consequence in this city for ignoring the law. It's not about a person, it's about behavior. Unlawful, deceptive and condoned by leadership who should also be held accountable. You know, tonight you swore somebody in who said they would be impartial. I wonder if Mr. Cummings took that oath as well. Again, management style, ignore them long enough and they'll go away. Well, guess what? I'm a resident and I deserve to be, I deserve for my questions to be answered and...
Your time is up, Ms. Bill.
And I'd like to know who's going to answer my questions, Madam President. Is that unfair?
This is not a question and answer period.
Well, that's just it. There doesn't seem to be one.
Your time is up.
There doesn't seem to be one that I can get an answer to questions.
Your time is up, Ms. Bill.
According to law.
Elizabeth Liu?
Elizabeth Liu, 17 Ruby Street. First, I just want to clarify, every year, what appropriations are not used revert to either being redirected by Aldermanic approval to other uses for the upcoming fiscal year or the mayor may assign it of his own choice to a like use in the upcoming fiscal year. If you look at September 1st, 2021 minutes of the finance meeting, at that time, that year, none of the escrows were questioned except by myself. And my question was, why is it that we just paid the final bill on the roof for 14 Court Street and yet we're asking to escrow $750,000 for Court Street roof? So we had that discussion at the September 1st, 2021 Finance Committee meeting, which you can find the minutes because at that time we had a transcriptionist. We paid the final bill and the request was for the $750,000 to be put in again. By, by doing this, what's required is every year, these funds that aren't being, that have, hadn't been used as expected, get re, get looked at again. There's a period when, when these escrows are looked at, when you can, when you can have some, you can weigh in on whether they should be used for the original purpose or whether they should be redirected. I also want to talk about the press table. I was here at the infrastructure meeting and I was horrified to see a chairman, a board chairman, humiliate one of our citizens as they sat at the table as I've seen people for two years. Did you say 10 seconds?
30 seconds.
Okay. The, the chairman spoke to the gallery and embarrassed Ms. Ordolano, just for kicks. It was ridiculous. To me, this seems like a petty issue and just put it back. Finally, President Wushier, I'm asking you to please get a transcriptionist because I, my lawyer...
Your time is up, Ms. Liu.
I can't finish my sentence?
No, you're done.
I hope you'll all consider whether this makes sense, if this is a way to...
We passed legislation for the time period. If you can't be respectful of that, I'm sorry. It's nothing I can do about it.
No, I'm respectful. I, I just thought I could finish a sentence. Thank you.
Laura Colhoun?
Laura Colhoun, 30 Greenwood Drive. I wish you, Ms. Wushier, would be more respectful to the residents. I'd like to go on the record, I've never asked to have the money taken away from Court Street. What I do want is I want the residents to be able to see that it is a losing proposition. We may in 10 years decide to make it a museum, which would be fine. The problem is I'd like more transparency with the city of Nashua and obviously that's something that you and a lot of other board members and the mayor. I'm also very upset with the mayor's email going out because when you say, oh, let's have outside dining, well, Nashua has outside dining, but it has nothing to do, you have to mention the barriers because most people are against the barriers. And that's all I have to say. And I think it's very petty that number one, the last chamber had cushions on those chairs, now there's none and now you've taken away the table? Shame on you all.
Scott McCullough?
Yes, I'd like to comment on...
Yes, I'd like to comment on, you guys are doing a fantastic job. Thank you to Mayor Jim Doncic. And I would like to know if Lori and everybody would be willing to make a team for the Best Buddies Friendship Walk coming up June 11th in Concord. I'd like to know, Mayor, could you, are you willing to donate some money or make a team for the Best Buddies Friendship Walk coming up in Concord, New Hampshire? It's for Best Buddies, New Hampshire. I was just wondering if, oh, I forgot to state my name. My name is Scott McCullough, Congress Street, Building 49, Apartment 6. Sorry, I forgot to do that. Sorry, I forgot to do that, Ms. Coachair. Sorry, I totally forgot to do that. I'd like to see if you guys could maybe make up a team for the Best Buddies Friendship Walk or donate, or Mike O'Brien and you guys could make a team.
Well, Scott, I'd be glad to donate, no problem.
Yeah, you can go to...
I'm sure some of the board will too.
If you guys would like to donate, you can go to www.bestbuddies.org. Look up Bangor, save it, Bangor Buddies on the loose. Hopefully, I didn't go too fast for you.
You're all set?
Thank you, thank you. And I greatly appreciate, keep up the good work and thank you for, thank you for us having the mask mandate rid of because you don't know how much that meant to me when I went into work and they told me I didn't have to wear a mask at my hotel no more. I love it! Freedom!
Thank you so much. You all set? Okay. Next, we have Matthew Guthro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll start over once again from my earlier comments. Matthew Guthro, 104 Fond Lane, here in Nashua. Today, in your meeting materials, you received a proposal of a strategic plan for our public library by Jennifer McCormick. Changes and enhancements to our library here in Nashua are long overdue. While I applaud the efforts to make our library a more engaging and inclusive environment, as a Nashua resident, I'm really disappointed at the state of the physical building and its grounds. Not to take away from Alderman O'Brien's previous comments on another item, but the public grounds that surround this building is also tired. I'm astounded as to how this city could let this public property get to this point. I remember speaking with Jennifer McCormick last year during our Nashua City Academy and sharing with her how this is not really a welcoming environment. Actually, for my four-year-old, who is an avid reader, she finds this place pretty scary. You see, this dark, overground, littered mess seems to only welcome vagrants these days. Instead of creating an unneeded pedestrian mall by closing off traffic lanes on our historic Main Street, maybe our mayor and this Board of Aldermen can focus your efforts on cleaning up the dilapidated grounds around our public library and restoring the public's interest in the grand institution of its own, very public library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, remarks by members of board. Scott on this side. Alderman Tebow.
Yeah, I got a few. So I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with some of the comments that were made in the, in the public session. So for Mrs. Ortolano, I mean, I was shaking my head and, you know, she could speak right through that. I didn't interrupt her. And the reason why I was shaking my head was because of what she said about surveys and data. And then the mayor's letter. So on the data and the surveys, you know, The Telegraph took a survey of 3,000 people out of 90,000 and came up with an 80% for barriers, right, against barriers. So what was that based on? Was it based on the new proposal? Who are the, who's the segment? I'm hoping to hear all this tomorrow. Who is the segment? Was it, you know, north, north, south, Main Street? Was it business owners? You know, if, same thing with Paul Sche's survey, right? So, you know, people might think I support Paul Sche's survey because I like Paul Sche. But it's the same thing. I don't know where that data is coming from. I don't know where Facebook poll data is coming from. But I tell you right now, the amount of emails we got, and if anybody here is, we're all getting the same emails, we're getting more for expanded dining. And you could say that's the mayor's email. But I'll tell you, there's Aldermen here, and I guarantee you there's Aldermen here, that are posting their own stuff on Facebook to their groups or sending email letters. I mean, I sent one to my group, but I didn't say I was for it or against it. I said, "Here's what's going to happen next week, whether you're for it or against it, come out. If you're a business owner on Main Street, come out. If you work on Main Street, come out. If you live in the north and you hate going down Main Street, come out. If you love going out and having dinner on, you know, on a nice, beautiful summer night, come out. I don't care what your opinion is, I want you here to tell us your opinion. And then I'll think about it and I'll make a decision." But to say the mayor's letter influenced more of the city or to come up with a 3,000 survey or a petition that was done on the old proposal or to say the police and fire are against it on the old proposal is nonsense. And so that's why I was shaking my head. I want to hear from the police and fire and AMR now on the new proposal that we will hear tomorrow night from Director Cummings. That's what I want to hear. And that's how I'll make my decision and I'll listen to all the people that come tomorrow night. That's how I make decisions. I don't make decisions on faulty nonsense and polls. I don't care what political party the poll is done on. If you can't tell me what the data is or where it's coming from, I'm not going to believe it, I'm sorry. And so as far as Ms. Bill, if you're in my ward, I'll respond to you. But I expect whoever, wherever you live, that that person would respond to you. I'm not going to respond to you unless you're in my ward or unless you talk to me directly. And as far as, two other things. So Ms. Sage, thank you for coming. This is why I got into this, right? She was maligned at that meeting and I did speak out at that meeting. And I don't know if anybody else did, it wasn't many of us. That was uncalled for and what's been happening to her is uncalled for. It's just not cool. You know, and she sounds like she's smarter than most adults, maybe smarter than some of us. Probably certainly smarter than me. And it takes a lot of courage to come here after that and to speak in front of us all. And, you know, I applaud her and thank you. And, you know, even some of the Aldermen that spoke to what she said last week called her Sage. Her last name is Sage, Ms. Sage, right? Let's not, let's get this right. And I thought we did a bad job there. And the last thing is, we referred the Court Street to the Budget Committee after the first reading. So I hear people saying, "Well, I want to know more about it." It went to the Budget Committee. Why didn't we have more information then? Why didn't we ask the questions then? What has come up now that we didn't know about then? And so that's why I was going to say, "Let's vote for it now and let's not refer it back to committee to go through it all again." It doesn't make sense. If we don't know, if we're not prepared when we come to this, then why are we doing this? You know? So that's it.
Alderman Catherine.
I'll start off by responding to Alderman Tebow, since I was at the Budget Committee. I did recommend it primarily because I thought, full disclosure, we still have to put money into the account anyway. And if I felt like that account was useless, I could vote no. Now, granted, that gives a chance for money to go into the account because the trust exists. However, after that meeting, like we stated, and I'm sure you guys all got the email from Director Kleiner about revenues and expenses. That was something that I didn't know. I didn't know about the original resolution. I didn't know about the roof going under capital improvements. There are a lot of things that revolve around Court Street that were not immediately known. And I don't even know if I would have been able to know to look them up, like the original resolution. So knowing that now, I don't think further discussion really harms anyone when we're trying to talk about how to spend money and how to take care of the city, especially if there's no, there's no time on it. So that's how I personally thought it through and that's why I ultimately put it back down to budget so we can talk about it again. To Mr. Guthro's comments about the library, at the Budget Review Committee meeting, we asked, I asked Director Kleiner about grants for historic buildings for Court Street and she said that they're looking at getting a grant right now for that particular area outside the library, the courtyard area. I don't know if you guys call it the mall, the library mall. And so I don't know if that'll get approved, I don't know if we'll get the grants, but they are looking at getting grants to take care of that part of the mall, a part of the library. So I know there's other things that need to be fixed, but we're doing what we can, I guess, and trying to make the improvements that we need. And lastly, the thing that I care about the most, and I'll try to make this brief. I grew up in New Jersey, a lot of people know that. There is a strong, strong Ukrainian community in South Jersey and I know a lot of people with a lot of family members in Ukraine. I was very close to Ukrainian family in New Jersey and I am very happy that the mayor is hosting this event for our solidarity with Ukraine. I think what's happening over there is nothing short of evil and someone who is just trying to take away the rights of people to do what we do in the horseshoe and talk about how they want their country to be. And so what little we can do, let's do that. Because honestly, I'll tell you right now, call me on my word, if I could go over to Ukraine and put in our military uniform, I'd be there now because they need it and they deserve it. And so if this is little that we can do, I'm for it. I'm for supporting Ukraine and their freedom and their independence. Thank you.
Alderman Povea.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight on Zoom, for talking, being part of the, part of the process and look forward to tomorrow night where I'm sure we're going to hear a lot of passionate testimony, both for and against the expanded dining. So I look forward to hearing that from anybody out there who will be in attendance on tomorrow night's meeting as well. Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Hopefully, some good news. I just wanted to let everybody know that we have received the Alteration of Terrain permit from the state and for the new middle school and construction is going to start next Monday. And it will be moving along and the new school will open up hopefully in 2024. Also, this evening, it was a new ordinance for bond for Franklin Street. There was a very detailed, extensive briefing that was done at the Joint Special School Building Committee on Franklin Street, which lays out all the reasons for the costs. And I am going to send that to everybody on the board. Some of you people have already seen it. So...
No, please don't. Bring it to a meeting. Pass it out at a meeting.
It's already been to the Joint Special.
So we can go find it there?
Pass it out at a meeting of this board, please.
Can I refer to the fact that it's in the minutes of the Joint Special already? It was made part of the minutes.
You've already said that, so that's fine. Don't send out an email about it, please.
Alderman Kamal.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. So the last time we met, two weeks ago, in this period for comments from Aldermen, there's a lot of talk about civility and I agree with all of that. I agree that when members of the public are speaking, they deserve to be treated with respect. But I do believe that that goes for also the ones that we don't particularly like or agree with. They deserve our respect also. And that respect should be extended to everybody, whether that's the public respecting us or us respecting the public. It should be between everybody and not just the people that we like. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I will go quickly. I first wanted to start by thanking the mayor for putting together an event for the Ukraine. I'm looking forward to seeing the flag flown and getting together with community members to reflect on what's going on there and how we're all feeling about that. So thank you, I will be there. I wanted to also take a moment to thank you, Madam President, for recognizing Rennie. He was a giant in New Hampshire politics and helped me greatly miss. And on a similar note, I wanted to thank the members of the board who supported me when I was out for a death of my family. I also was encouraged to see the library come forward. It does need some real hard looks in terms of what we can do to improve it. It's a building that gets a lot of use and is really an important part of the community here in Nashua. The Energy and Environment Committee's been talking a bit about it as well. And we see that there can be some energy efficient changes as we make these changes that could also help save taxpayers money in the long run. So looking forward to that project overall. Just a little fun, democracy is alive and well. Today is Town Meeting Day for cities or towns, rather, smaller than us. Quite a few people have come out and used their right to vote to get their voice out. And I've heard anecdotally that there's just been a lot of people out there. So thank you, everyone, for participating in the democracy. We do it here, but the vote is really important as well. So thank you.
This side. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I hope that if you would extend me this personal privilege, I remember when I first became a member of this board. Is my time up already?
That's what I thought.
Move it along, Alderman Jettie. Move it along.
Three minutes.
When I first, when I first became a member of this board, I remember President McCarthy telling us that, that, you know, we should work on legislation in committees. That that's where ordinances and resolutions should be vetted, questions asked. And, you know, if, just because you have a committee meeting doesn't mean the committee has to act on that ordinance or resolution at that meeting. If they have questions and the people to answer them aren't there, it's perfectly okay to hold it in committee until you can get the right people there to answer the questions so that when the committee makes a decision, a recommendation to the full board, the full board can rely upon the committee, committees having done its homework, you know, vetted the issues and come up with a recommendation, you know, as to what the committee thinks is the best thing. Now, you know, we referred a matter to a committee this evening and, you know, and somebody mentioned that, you know, that the committee met and dealt with this and that, you know, we shouldn't send it back to the committee. Well, you know, in that particular case, the, you know, the prime sponsor of that legislation was not able to be there. And we find out tonight that he had requested that it be held and that we not move ahead on it. Well, we didn't know that at the time, but, you know, we, you know, I fully expect when you sponsor a piece of legislation, whether it's, you know, you as an endorser or the mayor or the administration, that somebody is there to present the ordinance or the resolution to us and why they're asking us to adopt this. Now, on this particular matter at that meeting, there wasn't anybody there. And the chairman looked around and saw Ms. Kleiner and said, "Ms. Kleiner, can you, Director Kleiner, excuse me, can you help us with this?" And she said, "Well, I'm not here for that, but, but, you know, I can, yes, I think I can talk about it." So she was caught by surprise. John Griffin was here. He didn't, he wasn't expecting to talk about this. So, you know, I had a lot of questions and Ms. Kleiner did her, the best she could to answer all of the questions, but she couldn't answer a lot of them and neither could Director Griffin. And so, you know, we recommended final passage, but after that, we found out more information, we have more questions. And, you know, when, when you come to a meeting, you know, when legislation is proposed, you know, it's, sometimes, you know, there's a time schedule, a deadline we have to meet. But usually not. And so, you know, it's not like it gets put on a turntable and it's got to go around once and get off one way or the other. You know, if we have time... You know, if we have time to think about things, to give it the proper vetting, we ought to take that time. And when, you know, the prime sponsor of the legislation says, "Yeah, I have no problem with it going back to committee so we can discuss these things," he was never given a chance to explain, you know, why he sponsored it in the first place. So, this is the second time within two meetings where the prime sponsor of legislation has asked for it to be held because they were not able to come to the meeting. And in one case, the majority of us denied that and went ahead. And then tonight, you know, a majority of us said, "Okay, we'll let it go back to the committee." But a lot of us didn't. So, I would just like to, you know, ask us, you know, we're, you know, we're a group, you know, we all have the same goal, doing what's best for the city. You know, we're a collegial group. We should be cooperating to try to do the best we can. And if someone asks out of courtesy, you know, to delay something, especially if it's not, there's no deadline involved, to be able to ask more questions, get more information, you know, we ought to accommodate that. So, so in the future, you know, I hope that when a situation like that arises again, that we think about that and allow us to properly, I mean, when we, the motion was first made to re-refere, you know, I thought, "Okay, good, well, it'll go back to committee. We'll be able to discuss all these things and avoid what happened tonight." You know, we, you know, everybody was talking about this ordinance, and I'm not sure a lot of you have read it, because this ordinance doesn't allocate one dime to the Court Street Building. All it does is it establishes an account, in this case, an expendable trust account to which money can be, in the future, allocated. And it, you know, when I ask, you know, questions at the committee meeting, every time I asked about, "How does this work? How does this trust fund work?", I kept being, you know, I kept being told, you know, "We support the arts, you know, the arts are important." Well, I'm all for the arts. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm telling you, that's not the issue here. The issue is, you know, what is the purpose of this expendable trust fund? Is it a good way to manage, you know, this thing? Or, you know, is it, you know, is there another way of doing it better? And that's what the questions are all about. How do we best accomplish, you know, supporting this building? When I hear, you know, somebody say, "Well, you know, a tenant wants to make sure their money is being used for the building." You know, these tenants are paying a hundred dollars a month, two hundred and fifty dollars a month. We just spent almost, you know, over six hundred thousand dollars on that building, you know, since I've been an Alderman. That's how much we spent on that building. So, if they're questioning, you know, are we using their money to support that building? You know, the evidence is pretty obvious, I think. But, but thank you for indulging me. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Jettie. Anyone else on this side? Alderman Lopez.
I have notes. So, my first one is, I just wanted to clarify that for June 11th, the Best Buddies Friendship Walk, I can walk. As everybody knows, I like to zoom around on my Segway, but I can do the little analog walking every now and then for a good cause. So, if anybody's interested in doing that, then I'm definitely interested in participating. I believe it was Alderman Como, I forget. It was somebody from that side who mentioned that there was already some action being taken or intended to be taken with regards to the library grounds. The Court Street grounds and the library grounds bought each other, that little terrace area. There is a plan to renovate it. There was a plan, except the 2020 got in the way, and the library decided that, you know, maybe during the time where it was literally shut down, and there wasn't a lot going on in terms of, like, security and what our revenue would be coming back from COVID. It might not be a good idea to start a big development venture. So, their dreams kind of got crushed with that, but they have a very good-looking proposal and plan and all that kind of stuff that I would love to see them pull the money together to kind of do it. That's what the Library Trust does, the Library Trustees do. Additionally, the Court Street Theater is eligible for a lot of different art supports and a lot of art grants. We've already started getting some of those, or at least started to get grants, not specifically for 14 Court Street, but the ARPA arts funding. So, renovating the building is definitely a concern, and as I said, it's something that's been on the radar at least as long as the Performing Arts Center, if not before that. I can only speak to the year I started as Alderman, but I think it's very important to renovate that building, to update it and upgrade it, because while it may seem from the outside that the city is, well, you pay your rent and the city's investing seven hundred thousand dollars and all that, a lot of these companies haven't actually seen that fully realized because they haven't been able to do shows and they haven't been able to rebuild their own programs. And there has been some publicity criticizing the Performing Arts Center. I don't know if anyone else has seen it, but there is concern among the performers there that there's anti-art sentiment and that half of Nashua that is art enthusiast is so focused on the Performing Arts Center that they're not paying attention to community arts. And the other half doesn't want community arts or is of the same mindset that we don't need art in schools or that type of thing. So, just because from our perspective, and looking at the budget and the money that we put in, we feel we're investing in that building, that doesn't mean it's meeting the building's needs. It doesn't mean that the constituents and the nonprofit organizations that operate out of there agree with us. They may feel like a lot more needs to be done. We may agree that a lot more needs to be done, but have to make different budgetary decisions. We can't just say, "Okay, well, this is how much renovation has to happen. Let's just pull it out of the escrows, or let's bond it," or whatever. Using the process, using community development, trying to apply for grants and find other funding sources for that is part of the picture. Capturing the funds that are generated by that, you know, the new liquid therapy rentals and things like that, and making sure that they are supporting the building and don't get pulled away, you know, for a rainy day project or some other situation, that's part of a sustainability plan. I know that Director Kleiner has been very involved in overseeing that before her Director Cummings was working on it. I think a presentation is probably long overdue as to what's, you know, more immediately happening, and that definitely would have been a good thing to have at the Budget Review Committee. But, a lot of my comments earlier tonight were made specifically because of public comment that was made, which attributed, in my opinion, our motivations for doing something at Court Street to a detail I was not aware of even really being relevant. So, I was interested in clarifying the value of the building and the importance of it as much as establishing a vehicle in which to fund it and create sustainability. I don't think that's the total plan. I don't think that's going to solve every problem, as was pointed out. You know, maybe a third of just the operating expenses, but it is a step towards actual sustainability for that site, which is long overdue. So, I hope we have further discussions of that. I hope it gets vetted more thoroughly in committee and we're able to make progress on that. And I hope we are reassuring to the tenants that are there, that are engaging families and organizing children to pursue their dreams and all that kind of stuff, that they're not going to either be ignored, neglected, or marginalized. I also agree with what Alderman Jettie said with regards to doing the work of a committee and not necessarily rushing to a decision in the committee. Tomorrow's probably going to be a pretty big meeting. So, trying to just resolve it in one meeting in a way that satisfies everybody is, in my opinion, impossible. So, I hope we are able to come up with a starting point and we're able to really follow the issue and find solutions for what Nashua needs downtown. Because we are leaders, we shouldn't be engaging in any kind of tribalism when it comes to both parties needing to occupy the same space. I think if we lead and if we can come up with solutions that maybe don't make everybody joyful, but at least satisfy their needs, we're making a compromise, we're making a functional compromise that will help everybody. And then lastly, I just wanted to comment on Julie Sage and her dad, Daniel Sage, who should be very proud of her. She made some references that may seem a little bit outlandish to people. If you don't read New Hampshire Magazine or weren't aware of her, but she did patent a water filtration system which got major national attention. She has had multiple projects go up on the space station, or the, and that NASA has sent into space. It sounds unbelievable, but it's true. So, us not necessarily knowing right away that we have an accomplished 16-year-old scientist in our midst who is sharing extremely complex and sophisticated information and that we should be listening to it and that we should be impressed by it and proud of it as a city, is something we should take attention to. So, I would ask the mayor to consider recognizing her for her accomplishments formally, so that Nashua knows that it has young scientists, young inventors, and people who are qualified. She referenced some of her social media accounts, and I know I can start a YouTube. I can start a Twitter. Nobody's going to follow it, though. She has a pretty big following, and she's very successful, and it's because the information that she's giving out is sourced, is qualified, and is recognized by some very accomplished people in their own right as well. I think we should encourage that kind of innovation and insight and be cautious about how, what kind of conclusions we might lead to in having it presented to us. Thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. One, I just want to thank all the public speakers and especially Ms. Sage for being so courageous. You got it, I'm sorry. Sorry. You know, she came out and stood up for herself. I wish my daughters will do the same thing when they grow up, to stand their ground. And it's unfortunate, the harassment that she's experienced in the community. And I can tell you that, you know, my wife has had some issues in the community with, you know, pictures of our newborn child being photographed and the police saying, "Oh, there's nothing we can do." And that, this is not a recommendation for anyone, but in our case, my wife is now armed, because if there's nothing that she can do with the law, she'll protect our child. And I think sometimes that when you have encountered folks who are hostile towards you, you have to stand up for yourself, and that means even coming down here and using your words. Obviously, not advocating violence, but there's times that you have to take action at your own hands. And I really do hope my children are as strong as her when they become her age. Second, to Alderman Como's statements earlier, I do agree. We have to respect everyone who speaks here, whether you agree with them or not. You know, I'm new, I'm probably as worn down as others, but just, people deserve to be heard, no matter what their opinion is, right, wrong, in the middle, gray. Everyone up there talking believes themselves to be right, and it's up to us to filter through and find as much middle ground as possible. Outside dining barriers, whatever you want to call it, Alderman O'Brien and I will be co-chairing tomorrow night, and I welcome everyone to come out and speak to it. It is very important that, again, you're all heard, are heard, and you may make our job feel uncomfortable, but that's, you know, part of what we signed up for. And I look forward to hearing both sides of the argument. Ukraine, again, I mentioned this earlier, last week. You know, for Lent, I'm praying and fasting for the people of Ukraine, freedom fighters. You know, I might not be a former military like Mr. Kathy. Oh, you're not either? No. I may not be willing to throw arms on or an army shield, but I'll be definitely willing to go over there and provide mental health care. And I think what they're doing is standing up to an autocrat. They're standing up to anti-democracy, invasion, and that's American values. We're the shining beacon on the hill of democracy, and those folks are fighting for it. And I join them in fighting against an autocrat. Emails, do my best to respond to all of them. I've gotten quite a bit on the barriers. I probably responded to 90% of them. I've read every single one. There was one day I got maybe 120, maybe not hit all of them to respond. But if there are emails that I get that are related to, like, a legal matter, I'm not putting city taxpayers' money at risk by responding with the wrong answer. I think that's something for corporation counsel. If you mention a lawsuit or anything like that, that's not me. That's corporation counsel. I'm not putting city taxpayers' money at risk based on something I have a seat of my pants feeling to. But I'll do my best to get an answer for you, whether it might be forwarding off to the right city department. And I think, I think that's it.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. As meetings go on, I tend to put notes down, and I do one, two, three, four, just so that I can keep track of my thoughts as I'm going along. And when Ms. Sage stood up, she was my number four, but she's not. She's actually number one. First thing I have to say is what I wrote down here was, wow. She's quite impressive. And her dad was amazing by saying he wasn't going to speak for her. I absolutely loved that. But I have to address the shameful behavior. One of the things I noticed right off the fact was that when Ms. Sage was told her time was up, she didn't finish her sentence. She stopped speaking, unlike many of the adults in this room. Chief Rourke did the same thing. He stopped talking because he was being respectful. We talk about being respectful. Respect works both ways. And I know my colleague here to the side of me said, "He's not worn down." I don't feel like I'm worn down, but I've experienced it. I've experienced the yelling, the screaming. I'd sometimes follow language. It gets, it doesn't wear you down, but it kind of says, "You want respect? You have to give respect." And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I tell all my constituents, "I will do anything I can for you, but you need to respect me. You need to treat me. You need to ask me questions, not yell questions to me." Now, to the barriers. Comments were made about the mayor's letter being kind of deceitful. I didn't read it. I can't answer to it. But if he did put what was said down there, how is that any different than people around the horseshoe here or other elected officials that are putting out surveys, questions in a way that elicits the answer they want? I've asked that question. What's the difference? Why don't we call them out? Just putting it out there on the table. As far as replying to questions, emails, I've replied to a lot of them. Each one I asked the same question. Didn't matter what side they were on. Have you seen the new proposal? The majority of them, on both sides, said no. So, my feeling is that I appreciate everybody's answers. I appreciated everybody's response. I appreciate every single person who's come out here. I appreciate every email, and we've gotten, I think, probably close to 400 emails. And I commend you for having read every single one. We have gotten a lot, which I refer to as form emails, that state, "I am so-and-so." And you look at it, and we've probably got 30 or 40 that are exactly the same. I suggest strongly to my constituents, they write their own letters. They write for what they mean and not because someone asked them to do it or because there's a survey. I think if we're going to attack these issues, we need to do it really from our own heart. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little overheated here. I think my radiation treatments are starting to get to me, so. I want to talk about the Ukraine issue. I think everybody here has said the same thing. It's horrible what's happening over there. I'm impressed when men and women are standing in front of tanks and saying, "You're not going to go any further." I'm impressed with the president who's not 57 feet underground, and he's standing there and he's speaking to his people. I'm impressed with the countries that have opened their borders, and I hope we do the same thing here in this country. I've spoken to people who have said they want to work to get homes, families, that are willing to share. And I mentioned to Alderwoman Timmons that I suggested that they go to the Cultural Connection to see if maybe they can get some support there and so on. I wanted to also go, kind of circle back to Ms. Sage. You are an extraordinarily impressive woman, and I believe that Alderman Thibault said that you're probably smarter than he is. I can tell you, you're- I can tell you, you're definitely smarter than I am. By leaps and bounds. And I hope someday you're not sitting in this horseshoe, but I hope someday you're sitting in Washington DC, in one of those seats. You may be too smart for that, too, so I don't know. But putting all of that aside, I also want to thank President Wilshire and as well as Alderwoman Kelly for taking the time to have a moment of silence for our dear friend. I'm gonna try to get through this. So apologies. I've been a state rep for six years. Rennie has been by my side for those six years. Last term, I was a chair. Two years in, and I've become a chair of a committee with a very contentious member. Rennie taught me to remember the words that my mother said, you learn more from people who disagree with you than people who agree with you. I took that to heart. My mother used to say it all the time, and Rennie used it all the time. He said, if you talk to the people on the other side, and I did. I got more respect from my committee on both sides of the aisles. They treated me with respect. They were kind, and even the person who was contentious at the beginning, he taught me a lot. The day he died was the day that we had, was the anniversary of the day that we had passed the revoking of the death penalty. Rennie had been fighting for that for 26-plus years. He finally got it through. He died on that anniversary. I was, after that vote, and it was an emotional vote, I was walking down from the State House to the LOV. I was walking in the tunnel, and at the top of the stairs was Rennie. I walked over to Rennie and I said to him, you're an amazing man. He talked about how his father had been murdered, point-blank shot. There's a book about it. He talked about a few years after that, his brother-in-law shot, much in the same style. And yet, he still didn't feel for the death penalty. He actually fought for kindness towards a man who had taken his father's life. I was blown away. And then I told him about my husband's sister, who was shot multiple times, 18-year-old, outside of Boston Nursing College. He was, I think, seven years old at the time and turned his life upside down. My husband, too, is against the death penalty, even though this affected his life. I shared that story with Rennie, and I could barely get the words out. He hugged me and he told me, and he said another thing that will always stay with me. When you work and talk with your heart and kindness, you will find love all around you, and that positive energy will bring you to the best possible. I hope we can all do that. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Congratulations, Matt Sullivan, on the promotion. Well done. I got to know you when I was an alderman-elect and came in wide-eyed and not understanding what's going on. And now I have constituents asking me, how come there isn't a fire hydrant on my street? And you allow me to ask those questions and not make fun of me. So I appreciate that. So congratulations to the ordinance going back to committee. I think that we have to remember that legislation is not like an automobile on an assembly line. Because sometimes you have to, if you pass a known defect down the line, it can screw up things for years to come. And I think to sometimes halt the assembly line, to make sure that all the parts and pieces fit well together, is okay to do occasionally. I just want you to know, the alderman that you got for the next two years-ish, I'm not afraid to raise my hand, I'm not afraid to ask dumb questions, I will make mistakes, I will admit when I'm wrong. And sometimes I'll ask for a timeout and a pause to make sure we got it right, especially when it comes to the budget. It's the people's money. We have to make sure that we do the right things with it. So I appreciate us taking an extra pause on that, and definitely we'll do our due diligence on that, so thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Got a couple of things, so please bear with me. But the first thing, we'll start off in a sad note, and then we'll present it onto something really spectacular. But anyways, unfortunately, on this date, March 8th, 1971, Captain Henri Raymond of Nashua Fire Department made the supreme sacrifice and was killed in the line of duty at a second alarm fire on 23 Damon Ave. Captain Henri joined the Nashua Fire Department in 1938 until his death tragically in 1971. 33 years of service. When he died, he was 60 years old. Although his death was 51 years ago on this date today, I did not know him, but being a firefighter for 35 years, we never forget those that have made the supreme sacrifice and for us, particularly for our city. His name is on the plaque up on the wall on Manchester Street with 15 other firefighters who made the supreme sacrifice in the protection of the community of this city. So on this day, I and National Fire Rescue will remember, we always would keep, we never forget our own. May he rest in peace, and may God's eternal light shine upon him. Second thing, sadly, equally, chicken and chips burnt down yesterday. Probably to the chagrin of my primary care physician, but I did enjoy the treat of chicken and chips. I hope that the owners, it was popular. I wish them the best of luck. And hopefully, maybe something else can come out. I mean, they were a nice treat, and I did enjoy them. Moving up to something a little bit better, to all my women colleagues on the board and to all the women out there, Happy Women's, National Women's Day. Nobody, none of you girls mentioned it.
I was going to.
So I recognize you, and it's good to serve with you. The other thing that I have is maybe a recommendation to Alderman Dowd. What was brought up is the cabling. We really probably, if that's what, moving that cable, you know, I don't think you're gonna move it. They would have moved it when they built Lake Street, moved fire alarm from that location to Lake Street. You may think it's a good idea, bringing open wallet. You gotta look at it that some of that cabling is part of the telegraph system, those little fire boxes, they all run into that hub. And then from there is retransfer it back to Lake Street. So it's a bigger project, and I'm sure W-1 or Jeremy Adet can explain it, or Chief Buxton. The other thing is, there's tree cutting going on at the landfill. That's our project in infrastructure with Public Works. So it's not a bunch of beavers or anything, so it is part of the replacement of that project. And I did check my phone, and DraftKings did say that R-22008, which has been referred back to committee, will be coming back with a positive recommendation, I believe. I'll take those odds. But I just want to say something. I do agree with Alderman Tebow. Representative Cle knows the way we deal things up in the state. We put a lot of faith into each individual committee. We have to. And my committee alone was 58 bills. We were joined this week by Alderman Jenny, who did come up on another matter and was at our committee meeting, and hopefully you got to see some of the efficiencies. With 58 bills in one committee, if we kept re-referring things, it would be, oh, you know, tragic. I understand the doing diligence and understand, but keep in mind, I just say it's part of our procedures, if you do have questions, watch the calendar, show up to the committee meetings. And please keep that in mind, because I'll list that into a segue when we get into infrastructure tomorrow night, but I'll wait to committee assignments. And the final thing that I have, two final things, is wish me luck tomorrow. I'm going up to Conca to discuss with the Finance Committee. I'm glad you recognize Representative Rennie Cushion. He's the one that wrote that bill that is gonna put 7.5% back into the pension system. Him and I worked on that, and it gives me an honor to carry that forward. We got it off the floor of the House, like we said earlier. Now it's going to Finance. I'll go up and present it to Finance. I'll get into some arm wrestling with them up there, and hopefully that we can go from there. And so again, wish me luck. And I'd like to congratulate Alderman Lopez for volunteering with our resident Scott McCullough for best buddies, and I think if you want to handle that, that'd be outstanding, and call me as one of the donators. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Alderman Clemens.
Sorry, I wasn't gonna speak, but I, I didn't want to debate the legislation that was referred back to the committee tonight. There's a lot of things that need to be said about it. There's a lot of reasons why I brought it forward. I think the committee is the best place to look at it. I was on vacation. Had I been able to be at the committee meeting, I would have. I communicated to the chair, and maybe he forgot, that I was on vacation and that I would not be there, and I asked as a courtesy to table that legislation. So I don't know why it came out or why it ended up here. It should have been in the committee. We really should respect one another when it comes to legislation like that. Alderman Kelly, at the previous meeting, wanted legislation tabled here so that she could speak to it, and we chose not to do that. It's disrespectful. If somebody asks for legislation to be tabled and it's their legislation, respect them. If somebody wants it referred back to committee and it's their legislation, respect it. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Alderman Timmons.
The Department of Health has a bi-weekly meeting tomorrow at 12:30. Anybody that want to zoom in can do that. And I think we have JSS DC meeting on Thursday, is that right? This Thursday at Nashua Law.
No, is joint special this Thursday, Alderman Dowd, wasn't it? Joint special?
Joint special, is it this Thursday? I think so.
No.
No? Oh, good. That's even better.
Other committee announcements? No meetings? Alderman Lopez.
I believe we are having Human Affairs Committee on Pi Day, March 14.
Alderman O'Brien.
I was wondering how you could forget me. Just to remind everybody, in case you forgot, tomorrow night is the Joint Committee of Infrastructure and PEDC, and we will be discussing the barriers. I would just like to put out a little bit of the ground rules. We've got to follow a little bit different format. Of course, I, as chairman, will go by the wishes of the committee. But at the meeting in particular, I did, the agenda has been changed. First thing needs to be presented is a presentation. Let's put food on the plate. There's been a lot of innuendos and not so much in the factual department. So the presentation will be made by Director Cummings so that the committee members will be able to there and digest it and then to, in the time, make the proper decision. After the presentation, we'll go into a public format to allow the public to come forward. There will be a three-minute, you know, time limit to come forward and to express their point of view. After that, we will, you know, convene, and I think what we'll probably do at that particular time is work within the subcommittee and make a full recommendation to the full board on what the subcommittee will be. So even though we'll come into the procedure, as we traditionally do, I'll ask for the motion of final passes. Does that mean we're gonna vote on it? But it allows us to debate it with a positive recommendation that could be changed. And so that's gonna be the format. So to go on, I strongly encourage, so we don't end up repeating and going through again, this is a very important subject, if you can be there, that's where all the cool people are gonna be hanging out, so. Come on down, you're more than welcome. It's 7 o'clock, it's right here, I'll reserve a seat for you. So looking forward to seeing you all then. Thank you.
Alderman Clemens, do you have a motion?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 10:14. Thank you, everyone.